But now we'll move on. So, thank you. We'll move on to public hearing.
Item six, public hearing. Hold a public hearing and take the following actions to approve the mixed-use project at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761-767 Huntington Avenue. Adopt a CEQA conformity determination for the proposed mixed-use project at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. Adopt a resolution amending the transit corridor plan for the mixed-use project at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. Wave first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 12.96 of the San Bruno Municipal Code to establish a planned development district. Update the zoning map and adopt a development plan for the mixed-use project at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. Adopt resolution approving a planned development permit and architectural permit for the mixed-use project at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. Adopt resolution approving a vesting tentative map for the proposed project at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. And, adopt resolution authorizing the installation of loading zones on Huntington Avenue abutting the mixed-use project at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue.
Thank you. Please. Michael.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. The project before you for consideration is 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761-767 Huntington Avenue. The project will require the following: a CEQA determination, a specific plan amendment, a zoning code amendment, a planned development and architectural review permits, tentative map approval, and establishment of a loading zone on Huntington Avenue in front of the Just for orientation, the project is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Huntington Avenue and San Bruno Avenue. This is located right across the street from the Caltrain, San Bruno Caltrain Station. The applicant has already demolished the former building that stood at 111 San Bruno Avenue and proposes to demolish the adjacent commercial shopping center at 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue and construct a new five-story mixed-use building in their place. The building would be 65 feet tall with 62 dwelling units and 7,730 square feet of ground floor commercial space. It would have 78 residential parking spaces located in mechanical parking stackers and 13 commercial parking spaces, six of which would also be located in mechanical parking stackers. Usable open space would be located at the podium level, at the rear of the building, and on the roof adjacent to the gym. The building would have, as I said, 62 dwelling units divided amongst 10 studio units, 22 one-bedroom units, 29 two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom unit located in the corner. Units in this building would range in size from about 550 square feet to 2,200, to over 2,200 square feet. The project would require of the two, require the merger of the two underlying lots resulting in a 28,180 square foot single lot. The total building square footage would amount to about 103,000 square feet and some change, which corresponds to a 3.66 FAR. The project would also proposes the removal of a lane of traffic on Huntington Avenue to widen the sidewalk in front of the, the location by eight feet. And this would create a landscape bulb out at that corner in front of the property. And that bulb out would be for the public in general. And it would also create eight parking spaces on the street. Two of those parking spaces would be specifically loading zone spaces. And on the slide above is a rendering of what that corner is anticipated to look like when finished. Vehicular access to the residential parking garage would be from San Bruno Avenue and vehicular access to the commercial parking garage would be from Huntington Avenue, leaving a majority of the building's ground floor devoted to storefront. The garage entrances are pushed towards the edges of the building so that the active space is prominent within the design. And the garage itself wraps the commercial space too, so that it doesn't have an impact on the character of the building. As I said, the, the building would have parking stackers to accommodate the amount of parking that is required. All of the residential parking would be located in 26 commercial parking stackers and that's what's shown on the, on the overhead, just, just for a reference. Each one of these would accommodate cars going three-high for a total of 78. The commercial would also have six, or two parking stackers holding six cars in total. And those would generally be used by the, the folks that work at the, at the commercial space, not by visitors to the commercial space. All parking for the project is within the range as specified by the TCP. And all parking is independently accessible. And the project does not require any concessions from, from parking. As I said, open space for the project is located at the rear of the building. There'd be 1,920 square feet of open space, shown on the overhead in green. That is located at the rear. And that's on the podium level. Another 3,660 square feet would be located on the roof of the building, adjacent to the fitness center. To, going back to the podium level open space, there would be planters and trees along the edges of that open space at the podium level to provide a buffer between the occupants who use that open space and their rear yards of the buildings on Mills Avenue. So the site is located directly across the street from the San Bruno Caltrain Station and is considered opportunity site number, catalytic opportunity site number two within the Trans, San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan, AKA TCP. It is considered a catalytic site because it is at a prime location, is at a key gateway to the, to our downtown, specifically the northern entrance to downtown. And we feel that it has the ability to transform the area as a whole. So that's why it was considered a very important site in the TCP development. And on the overhead here, you can see, this is a image taken directly from the TCP document. The TCP estimated that a five-story mixed-use building would be built on this site. That building would have, would have had 40 dwelling units, over 9,000 square, square feet of commercial space, eight street parking spaces, 40 residential parking spaces, also in mechanical stackers. And the project would provide 62 dwelling units, 7,730 square feet of ground floor commercial state, space. We would get the same eight parking spaces on the street. And it would have 78 parking spaces, which is a greater than one per one ratio. And so that's more than was that, what was actually estimated for this project site in the TCP. It is important to note, though, that the project as it is proposed today includes 761 to 767 Huntington, which was not included in the TCP estimate for the site. It is a difficult site to develop. It is only about 75 feet deep at its narrowest point, so that made it kind of challenging because we're trying to activate the space and get good commercial space on there, make it a very pedestrian-friendly, but we're also trying to put the parking on it. So we felt like we came up with a good solution by putting the commercial space in front and trying to hide the parking and making, make it as efficient as possible for the project. That said, the project does require some concessions from the TCP as shown on the above And in, and in exchange, the applicant will be providing two additional affordable units for the project for a total of 11. So the, our affordable housing requirement would be nine units, and so there, this would be an additional two units to that. And both of those units would be at the low-income level. So, speaking to the concession specifically, the required front setback along the, so that's along the front, which would be in this case Huntington Avenue, is 10 feet. The project provides a five-foot side, a five-foot front setback. There's no required side setback. A 10-foot rear setback is required where it abuts the low-density residential building on San Bruno Avenue. There's no setback there. The project also requires step backs at the upper floors, above the third floor, the step back from Huntington and the San Bruno Avenue frontages. So it should be 15 feet there and it would provide eight feet, two inches, and that setback would begin at the fifth floor only. And also at the rear, the project is to provide a 15-foot rear step back at the third, above the third floor. And there, it provides a six-foot seven rear step back. So that, those concessions are kind of illustrated more in the table and, but also on, on the We feel that the concessions really allow the project to maximize the dwelling units on the site. And we feel that because it is such a key location within the TCP, that a more dense development was appropriate for the site. So again, this is what I talked about earlier. So nine affordable units are required for the project. They're providing two additional. And those would be divided up amongst, so there'd be five moderate income and six low income, where only five moderate income and four low income are required by code. And again, this, this is the community, community benefit that is being offered in exchange for those concessions from the development standards. There's also a TDM program associated with the project. The project would provide transit subsidies to residents to reduce their reliance on vehicles, personal vehicles, as well as transit subsidy to the employees. There would be, distribute transportation information to all residents and workers within the building. There'd be an onsite TDM coordinator to help people manage how they get to and fro. There'd be an onsite rideshare program, a bicycle sharing program, as well as, they were gonna do high bandwidth internet so, for those who, to encourage those to work at home. And a number of both Class 1 and Class 2 bicycle parking spaces, Class 1 being the more secure, so for people who really want to get around by bicycle. So the applicant held a number of meetings with the community. We require a pre-app process for building, for development within the TCP. So we had that meeting as well, and as meeting notices were mailed for tonight's meeting. We didn't receive any public comment in response to the notices we mailed out for tonight's meeting. Generally, the project was well-received by the public. They thought it was a great-looking building. The only concern that was heard was regarding the parking. The Architectural Review Committee reviewed the building as well, twice. Once, once again at the TCP and then again for project approval. One, some of the things they said when they first reviewed it was that they wanted to provide some kind of a buffer between the open space at the podium level and the residents' rear yards on Mills Avenue, and that has been added to the project. They wanted to treat the rear wall of the podium level, that's that same wall that's facing the neighbors' yards on Mills Avenue, and they have done that as well. They've added some growing vines on that wall, as well as they've created some architectural interests with the materials on that wall as well. And then they also wanted them to provide more information about the garage door, which they've done. And so all these recommendations have been incorporated into the project before you. When the, when the ARC reviewed the project a second time, they really liked, they commented on the, they really liked the use of the wood on the facade. They thought that was nice, they gave it a kind of a warm feeling. Again, the concern regarding the lack of parking came up specifically in relationship to the commercial parking. And at that time, the project had nine parking spaces with no parking lifts, so that had been increased since then to provide those parking lifts and increase the commercial parking numbers. So now they're within the range for the TCP. Some concern, there was a little bit of concern about the, the use of mechanical stackers. We did do a site visit with, I think, one or two commissioners, and we went out to other sites just to see how these things work. This would be the first project that I'm aware of in San Bruno that has the mechanical stackers. And so, just to see, you know, the efficiency and just to see if they were usable for normal people, we talked to a few people who use them, and they seemed to work well. And it's definitely the most efficient way to park that number of cars on this site. There was difference of opinion about the use of the brighter colors on the facade, but ultimately, that is what you see before you, that you have the green and the orange on the, on the building. And they had a little bit of difference of opinion about the asymmetrical placement of the balconies on the facade, but that, that again, has not changed. So, a little bit about the CEQA that's required, or the environmental review that's required. So this project is located in the TCP and adopted EIR for this project was adopted in 2013. And it analyzed the project at a programmatic level with potential impacts identified and mitigation measures applied in the program EIR to avoid, to avoid any, or reduce any potentially significant impacts. And so under CEQA guidelines, we are able to use that same EIR if no other impacts have been identified. And so this is part of what you need to do today is, is make a CEQA determination. We did do additional environmental review. We have a number of studies, and that is part of that checklist that's attached to the staff report. And that showed that there would no, be no specific impacts related to this project that weren't already identified in that TCP EIR. So we are using that along with the checklist. In closing, the project would be the second significant new development in the downtown and would visually enhance the existing site and would provide an improved visual anchor at the northern entrance to the city's downtown commercial area. The project would alleviate a physical and economic blight that has existed on the site with the vacant building that had stood there for many, for a few decades. And it's located at a very prominent intersection, so we feel like this is a necessary development, it's a needed development for, for this location. We feel like it would be a real good revitalizer for, for the downtown. In addition, the project is located across the street from the new Caltrain Station and when, within a short distance to both Samtrans bus routes and the San Bruno BART Station, which increases the residents' ability to take transit options in the area and reduce their reliance on personal automobiles. The proposed project design is consistent with the vision of the TCP and its design guidelines. And although the project deviates from certain development standards, it is done to achieve an urban building form and provide for a more lively mixed-use building. So at this time, the Planning Commission and staff are recommending to adopt the attached resolutions and ordinance, recommending approval by the City Council. And again, those are to adopt a CEQA conformity determination for the project, a specific plan amendment, a zoning code amendment, a planned development and architectural review permits, a tentative map, and establish two loading zones on Huntington Avenue. And this concludes my presentation and available for any questions or comments.
Any other staff member? This is a public hearing as well. The city clerk has told me we do have one speaker card as well. Council would like to hear from the public first. Melissa?
Good evening. I'm Vaughn Gregory. I live at 953 Green Avenue in San Bruno. My husband and I have owned our house in San Bruno for 34 years. And in San, in San Bruno, particularly the area where we are, on the east side, there's lots of parking problems. And we all have heard parking problems, parking problems, parking problems. And all I can see from this new building is more parking problems. And I don't understand a lot of things about the building, but I really don't understand why we're using sort of a minimum range for parking at the building. I realize that it's transit-oriented and we don't want people to have too many cars who live there. But you gotta be real. There are, there, people have cars. That's how they communicate and how they get around in, on the peninsula. This building will have a minimum number of parking spaces for the residents in the building. You have a range in your guidelines and the range that we're, that, and the number that you're allocating is at the minimum of the range. It's not at the, at the maximum. I don't get it. If we're listening to, if the city council is listening to people and their parking problems by approving this as it stands tonight, you're not listening to the residents. A couple other issues I have. It was suggested that, that a lot of the parking problems in the city are due to the residents. Well, this only increases parking problems. Why bring in more problems when we know we have issues that haven't been addressed? We had people here earlier tonight who have asked the city council to take care of these things. You've responded by saying that, yes, we have, we're keeping the ball rolling in January. There will be another town, a town hall meeting. And why not wait until we allocate parking in this building until January, till we hear more, till you have more ideas? I know the developer wants to get rolling on, on this project. It's been a long time being an ugly site. Downtown San Bruno is not attractive. We've had a developer in downtown San Bruno for a long time who held onto properties and didn't improve them. And from what I understand, this is the same person who, now deceased, is still putting ugly, ugly buildings with problems in our city. Why do we need to continue this kind of legacy for him? Another question is why are we making concessions to the developers? I understand my time is almost up. I have one other thing. Can you tell me how long it takes to park a car in a stacker? Can I get that question answered possibly when we're done?
Yes, absolutely. Sir? Yes, you will get that answer.
Okay, all right. I guess that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Russell Steins.
Good evening again, guys. Sorry to trouble you. It's in my humble opinion, a few things here. One is, is that the setbacks have been taken away from the residents behind this building. And to me, I would hope that before you guys approve this, you all actually look at that if you lived in those residential areas and see if they would impact your quality of life negatively or not. And the second thing, I, I'm noticing the picture here, and I noticed that I see on this picture in this illustration that a car's looking to get in to the garage, and I see them blocking residents trying to walk down the street. So I'm quite concerned between the, the lack of parking, I truly believe that we're, we're lacking, also the, the way this is set up, I have a feeling that we're gonna have a big problem here, so I just want to put that out to you. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Okay. There were a couple. And then now also, we've heard from the public, and now we'd like to have an opportunity for the applicant before we have it come back to council. And then if you're able to answer, I know you, you were, said you would be able to answer the one on the stacking.
I will answer that question.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, vice mayor, members of council, we're very, very happy to be here. It's been a long process. We've been through three neighborhood meetings where we have heard a substantial number of citizens from the city of San Bruno. With me here are representatives of the sponsors, Lara Lee from San Bruno Development LLC, and Shannon, representing the Welch family, longtime property owners in San Bruno. I want to first thank you for all the help. I want to thank city officials for all the hard work you do to bring these projects to fruition. And Michael, especially you, thank you for taking the time and the effort to work with us for such a long time. Having thanked the people that I should thank, I would like to answer the lady's question. It is very, very quickly to get your car in and out. It's like 30 seconds. You push a button, you have your own, I don't know where the lady was. Oh, there you are. You have your own card. It's extremely safe. And you put it in, and it brings your car down. You walk in and you drive out. There is no danger. And in fact, two members of the Planning Commission went on a tour with Michael and myself and the owners, and they saw a two-high parking lift and a three-high parking lift. And let me tell you, as an architect who does a lot of housing, and we build a lot of housing, and we do very conscientious housing. We don't do housing where we come in and kind of use the neighborhood. We work with the neighborhood. Mechanical parking in its, all its forms, there's some very high-tech stuff out there that is absolutely amazing, is one of the answers that you need to look to when you have a parking problem in an urban area. Throughout Europe, all the public's parking garages are mechanical and electronic, and they can, they can achieve a much greater number of cars. We have a lot of cars in this building, and they are three-high. It's not a cheap process, but it does provide the kind of parking that is required by the TCP. So having said that, I just, Michael did such a great presentation, there's not a lot for me to say. I'm just gonna quickly walk you through the building, point out a few things that are architectural in nature, that are important to us. Because what we do is we, we do buildings that represent the spirit of their time. We do buildings that take elements from, from the context, from the neighborhood, and incorporate them. And we do buildings that are interesting to look at. We don't like these single material facades that you see. We like our buildings to be articulated, to look like a regular city street with different, different shapes, different forms, and different materials. This, the corner here is designed to sort of make a dialogue with the tower that is at the transit station. The, the upper level is set back to reduce, and then the building is divided into smaller volumes to reduce its impact because it's a very long building. Also, there is a glass and metal canopy that separates the upper levels from the lower levels, provides rain and sun cover. And also, we have been instrumental in helping widen Huntington Avenue so we can create this nice little corner area that is used by the residents. This will promote pedestrian traffic, which does not exist there. The space is currently dead. We want to bring life to it. I'm gonna go to the next. This is the building looking from the south towards San Bruno Avenue. As you can see, we have, and this is a slide that Michael also showed. It shows the, what, what you could have when you have pedestrian-oriented activities on a when you have pedestrian-oriented activities on a corner. And all it took is eliminating one lane, which wasn't really necessary, and creating a wider sidewalk. Something as simple as creating a wider sidewalk allows you to have additional parking and allows you to have a space for people to congregate. This is looking from San Bruno Avenue. And oops. Something's not -- oh. I just wanted to show you the floor plan. You could see that an enormous effort has been put into almost 300-feet-long row of mechanical parking in order to provide the parking that's required. Plus, the handicap parking and the commercial parking is over here. And also, by widening the street and creating this lovely corner plaza, we are also providing additional street parking, which isn't there currently. Well, okay. This is a typical floor plan, and you've seen that. And as you can see, we have common open spaces, and we have a large variety of units. And every unit, Varan, every unit, has its own private outdoor space. We don't -- keep going. Just trying to go to the -- okay, the fifth floor, I just wanted to show you. The fifth floor has a big open space. It has a gym for the residents to use. It is landscaped, and again, it's set way back, way back to mitigate the mass of the building. Technology -- this is our elevation. And just one final slide, I think should be there. Those are the elevations. Excuse me. Okay. I just wanted to bring something here to show you. No effort has been spared to provide -- what?
I'm going to put this here so I think you can see it.
No effort's been spared to provide a really attractive and not necessarily inexpensive palette of materials and colors and products to go into that building. This is going to be a building that I think will become an important structure in San Bruno. We hope you like it. I know you will enjoy it. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else from staff? Michael? Okay, so we'll bring it back up to council for questions.
Go ahead. Well, I have a question from Michael. Can you talk a little bit about the TCP requirements? And he did cover that on one of the slides, but I just really want to -- based on the number of units and then based on the commercial space, the TCP really is the piece of information that says, as a developer, I come to the city with a proposed project, and I have sort of guidelines to that. This is what's -- we've approved. This is what we've voted in, is the transit corridor plan. It says, these are the requirements. So based on this property, can you just reiterate again for everyone's sake?
Sure. So for the residential parking, the TCP has a range, and that range is from 60 to 92 parking spaces. The project would provide 78. And for the commercial parking, it would require 12 to 23, and the project is providing 13. And then there's additional eight on the street. Those don't necessarily count as parking, but there are parking spaces that are not there now, and they will most likely be used by folks that frequent that.
Correct. Correct. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Because that takes care of the -- another question that was raised about the range and the parking. Questions from council? Come on, folks.
I'll make another comment, or another question I have. And so the other piece of information is, if you're traveling on Huntington and you're going from north to south, you're going to lose that new lane, which is actually going to provide the additional parking on Huntington in front of the building. But if anything, maybe we need to talk a little bit about is the future of the transit corridor area as well. The photo that we saw, the bulb out on the corner, where are we going for the future of that neighborhood? And Michael, do you have -- maybe you can talk a little bit about that?
Sure. What we're really trying to do is create more pedestrian activity, get folks walking on it, and make that environment very pleasant. And right now, the sidewalks in certain areas are very, very narrow. And so like, if you walk in front of this particular site, you'll see that the sidewalks are, I believe, only about six feet wide or so. And so by widening it, it does create a place where folks would want to hang out. And then that's also the building being set back adds to that sidewalk as well. And so that's really the vision of the TCP, is to create an area that is more pedestrian-friendly and then have that kind of flow into San Mateo Avenue, where it naturally is a very pedestrian-friendly area.
In addition, just to piggyback on that, in taking out one of the two existing lanes on Huntington when you go north to south, that was looked at and analyzed, and it really didn't impact traffic that much because when Huntington meets San Mateo Avenue, it's one lane already. And so it just -- you're essentially merging down to one lane a little sooner. But there are significant benefits to both the project and parking, to narrow Huntington to one lane, north to south.
So quick maneuvering has to occur when you cross San Bruno Avenue. And my other question is, in relation to the resident, somebody -- Mr. Steins actually made a comment about if you live next door to the building, and the setback is pretty close. Has staff, has anybody reached out to the resident and their feelings and concerns? I also appreciate the comment that there have been three neighborhood meetings to really get the public outreach. And I know that there has been changes that actually occurred based on those things. So I appreciate that as well. So comment on the neighbor.
Yes. So the occupant or renter of the building in question, so let me step back a second. The 10-foot setback for this project would be required adjacent to that green building on San Bruno Avenue. That's the only place where that setback is called for in the TCP. The renter of that building, the occupants of that building, did come to, I believe, one or two of the meetings. They were very aware of the project and did not bring up any concerns regarding that, that zero lot line proposition that's being proposed. And then in addition, staff did reach out directly to the owner of that property, just to make them aware of the situation. And he did not have any concerns. He was actually very favorable for the -- very much in support of the development.
Thank you so much, is my question.
Okay, and before -- so, sir, were you going -- did you speak on this item? So what I haven't done is I haven't closed public hearing, which I need to take that, so.
I -- no, I didn't. I helped with the environmental initial study, and in case there was a question.
Okay. So you were just standing by.
I was just there, but the city manager answered.
Thank you. So I did not close public hearing as I should. There's a process to this, so. Did you want to speak?
Yes.
And then I will ask council to close public hearing, so we can -- wait till you get to the mic, so they can hear you. Please.
I'd like to be able to use this to point out.
Bring it on over.
This is the north side of the building.
Thank you, Sandra.
This is the north side of the building. Imagine the traffic during rush hour, going east and west, and this person coming from the east wanting to make a left-hand turn into the building. And the west traffic that's going east is going to block him. You could sit there and have the light go two or three times before he gets a chance to even go into the building. If the person's coming to the east from the west, and he wants to make the right-hand turn, he's going to do the same thing. He's going to have more problems unless he can get in. But it won't be as bad a problem as the person going from the east to the west. So he could be blocking the traffic all the way through, under the tunnel, all the way back. And that's a problem with this particular entrance. And I don't see it as a real safe one.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Now, need a motion to close public hearing from council?
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Staff, or did we want to answer the last question? Michael?
Sure.
Please.
So at least in regards to the east -- or excuse me, westbound traffic going on San Bruno Avenue, you cannot make an eastbound left turn into the proposed garage on San Bruno Avenue. There's a median there. So the only way to enter that garage would be going eastbound on San Bruno Avenue. And that would just be a direct right turn in.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make one comment in light of what has just been said. We did have three neighborhood meetings. Every entrance and exit from this building was discussed. It was also reviewed by the traffic department. It was reviewed by a company that did a complete study. Anytime you're going to make a left into a driveway, you stand the possibility of blocking traffic. These buildings, because they have more apartments and more cars, doesn't mean that they have a lot of traffic. In fact, if you read the reports, you'll see that the number of trips generated is very low. So clearly, it's an issue that was discussed and was discussed probably two years ago and even three years ago. And people have had the opportunity to bring this up. So I feel that what we have here is really a very good solution. I think that the circulation work, the parking works, and the number of parking provided really meets the TCP. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Smith, though, you were answering the question as far as the turn is concerned, which was the original question.
That's correct. And after looking at the project again, the only way to get into both garages is to make a right-turning movement. There is no left-turn movement into the garage. There is a condition of approval from Public Works to extend the median on Huntington Avenue. So if you are traveling northbound on Huntington Avenue, you would not be able to make a left-hand turn into that garage on that side. So the only way to get in is to make a right-turning movement into the garage.
Thank you for clarifying. All right. Counsel?
Oh. I was just going to make a couple of comments. So I travel, traveling from -- on Huntington, traveling north to south. There is a left -- dedicated -- at San Bruno Avenue, there's a dedicated left-hand turn. There's a straight, and then there's a -- the other lane on the right is also straight. But now, because we are going to close off the other lane on Huntington Avenue, I would like to suggest that we look at turning that right -- that lane into our designated right-hand lane. Because I have -- partly, even now, it would be nice because people who are driving on those two lanes, yeah, everyone here has done it. You forget, and then you have to jiggle around, and it's very unsafe anyway. Well, I shouldn't say it's unsafe. It can be a difficult maneuver to do. So that might be another thing to look at that would eliminate people trying to move over from the right lane over to the left lane. Am I clear? I know I was a little --
You would have to be. You would have to eliminate.
Yes.
You would have to eliminate that, yes. It's a right turn over.
Okay, thank you. And I'd also like to say that in general, and some of the planning staff will testify to this, that I don't usually like buildings with no curves in them. But I have to say, this building is -- does many things that I didn't think straight lines could do. And I think it has a lot of detail and articulation and interest, just as you said. I'm particularly impressed with the innovativeness of having your roof do all the things that it's going to be doing. And I like the idea of the -- or I like the concept of the wider sidewalk and all the other things. So I'll leave my colleagues to make other comments.
Marty?
Thank you. Where'd it go? Oh, there it is. It's a -- well, it's a nice-looking building. And I can see that a lot of thought has been put into it. If you can show me the parking level, and I just wanted to understand how commercial parking and residential parking -- so if somebody wanted to go to the store, could they enter the parking structure? I mean, the garage, the parking garage.
Yeah, if they want to go to one of the stores, they can either park in the temporary, short-term spaces that are on the street, or they can go into the building, and there will be, you know, there'll be signs. There will be for the commercial parking. And then there is a gate so that they cannot go into the residential area.
Can you pull that first? There was a picture of it, and I just wanted to get a better visual of how that would work. So for commercial, people could pull into either driveway? Either entrance to the garage?
No.
No.
No. Commercial only in Huntington.
Okay.
And residential only on San Bruno Avenue.
So that would be an open garage, I mean, open door. Is there a door on that other side, then?
Yeah, it's a --
A gate?
It's a rolling door.
A rolling gate?
Yeah.
So what prevents somebody that wants to go shopping there? And how -- is there a way that they're made aware that the parking lot is full?
Well, we haven't really developed that yet. There's a limited number of parking spaces. And we could have -- it's a good idea. We should have an illuminated sign to say, no additional commercial parking available, or something like that, yeah. The number of square feet of commercial is not that large. And hopefully, we are hoping that we can get a café in the corner, and that will attract pedestrians coming from the transit center, you know, and come in and, you know, have a cup of coffee before going someplace else. So I don't -- this is not the kind of commercial that requires a lot of parking.
Okay. So of these 78 parking spaces, who gets the parking space?
It's -- there is -- there's going to be a -- an assignment based on unit size and other factors that will make it -- we have more than one car per unit. So obviously, small units will get one car. Larger units will make it two or make it just one. But that will be developed as a program by the owner and the marketing department.
In one of the later attachments, there was mentioning of unbundled parking. And I just wanted to clarify, so these parking spaces are going to be charged separately?
Well, this is something that a lot of the transportation people who do the studies recommend. And the reason for it is that if you sell the unit for one -- for price A, you sell the garage for price B, those people who do not want to have a car or may be encouraged not to own a car encouraged not to own a car, can save themselves substantial amount of money. That's what the whole concept of unbundling is. It was recommended, it's recommended in every project that I've done. I'm not an expert on it, but this is one of the things that has, that is usually recommended as a way of reducing the number of automobiles.
Okay, but currently, for the affordable units, do they get a parking space?
They will get, yes, they get exactly what everybody else is getting. They cannot be discriminated against. The units are exactly the same, they're finished exactly the same, and the parking, the parking assignments are the same. So if they're getting a studio or a one-bedroom, they'll get one car. If they're getting a bigger unit, like a two-bedroom, you know, the units, we have done a complete study of where the affordable units go. They have been distributed evenly throughout the building, so nobody says that you're trying to create some sort of enclave of...
I saw them dispersed on different floors.
Yeah, they're dispersed throughout, and they are also representative of the type of units that are available.
Okay. How are the affordable units made available to the public? How does that, how does that process work?
I can answer that question.
Michael?
Currently, the city is not set up to administer those units, so we'll be looking at bringing in a third-party administrator, like a hip housing, to help us administer those units, because it's a very labor-intensive process. Thank you.
Is there any favor or higher percentage of, that if somebody from San Bruno applied compared to somebody anywhere else, is there, is there a way of legally allowing preference to a San Bruno resident that wants to live in the city they grew up in?
At this point, we have not reached out to a third-party consultant yet. That would be done, and the process will be put in place before the building becomes, comes online. Not sure if it could actually be legal.
No, I don't know. I was just curious, it'd be like, it'd be great if it was some San Bruno people that actually were able to live here.
Yeah. So that's a really good question. We don't know the precise answer to that. Part of that answer applies to who the third-party administrator will be. A lot of those regulations really relate to, is it state dollars, federal dollars, or national dollars? If all of your dollars are local, that are administering that program, then you have more ability to restrict it to local residents. Oftentimes, when you're using state or federal resources to do that...
And it's open.
...you cannot discriminate, and so, and then it's a partnership with the property owner, too, and so those details just aren't worked out yet.
Got it. For the commercial space, the 7,700 feet, square feet, how many businesses are limited there? I mean, can you have, is it just gonna be two? Will it be five? Is there 10? Can you do as many as you'd like? Because that definitely will impact the parking, right? Because every one of those person who works there needs to park.
The city has not instructed us as to the number of spaces, but given that we only have 7,000, you can't have a lot of tenants. But ultimately, the decision, I think, will be the Welch family, who owns that portion of the building and will manage that portion of the building.
Okay. For the, I'm sorry, I jumped on that automatic gate, and also for the stackers, is there a generator, backup power for when there's a blackout and people want to leave and get into their car, or whatever?
Yeah, it has its own power system, and it has its own sprinkler system.
Okay, like a battery backup power?
There is a possibility of having a generator available that can be ordered as part of the system in the event of power outages. That can be done.
Okay, just curious, because it's great that, I agree that having these stackers could be really, really beneficial, obviously, right? But you've got a way, the positive versus the negative, and by them having that backup power, that would be great.
And now they have, they're, they have three-dimensional ones.
Yeah, the whole shuffle right?
Yeah, it's amazing, but quite expensive.
So, page of five of 15, just this one sentence where they're talking about the vesting tentative map, and it says, page five of 15, "A tentative map is necessary to create condominiums for the commercial spaces and the residential units on the floors above for possible sale, lease, or transfer of ownership." So the commercial spaces could be sold individually as like a condo? Is that, is that what that sentence means, or am I misunderstanding that?
That is the correct understanding. The project itself is a joint venture, so the owners of the underlying lot, which was 111, and the owners of the shopping center located adjacent to it, which is 761-767 Huntington Avenue, this is their joint venture project, and it's my understanding, though the applicant can maybe weigh in a little bit more, that the owners of the 761-767 would take the brand-new commercial space, and the developer would have the units up above. Those units would be condoed for potentially future sales.
Right, the potential, it doesn't have to be, but it's said in the tentative map that it can be sold or at a later date, right?
Yes.
And in the staff report, it said that that will be decided at the owners, whenever they feel like it.
It's also just a way to hold the partnerships differently, so there'll be two different homeowners association, one for the commercial and one for the residential. So there'll be two owners.
Got it. Okay, I got it. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have a few more. So, page six of 15 says, "The applicant has committed to not having a sit-down restaurant use within the commercial space. Only general retail uses are anticipated for the commercial space." If it doesn't prohibit it, then it's allowed. But it sounds like the cafe would be at the intersection, at the corner, but it's prohibited to have a restaurant in the interior space or on the southern side of the building? Is that correct?
I can clarify.
Sure.
So there is a condition of approval attached to the project, which would not allow them to have a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant at this location.
Okay.
And the reason being is because it has, it carries a greater parking requirement.
Exactly.
Exactly. So the cafe itself is not considered, it's just considered retail.
In the report, it mentions that, the traffic study, it mentions that the, they did the study, and there were three parking spaces open during the night in the residential We heard it already earlier about the parking impacts, and this won't make it better. The project's good, but I think it's more of a theory and not yet proven that that amount of spaces is going to work for that building. So I'm concerned about that. I recall at other council meetings or subcommittee meetings regarding parking, that it is not allowable to prohibit a building from their tenants of having the right to have a parking permit for adjacent streets. And it's my understanding that that is only allowed if the developer agrees, within a developer agreement, to allow that to happen. So I'm interested in hearing why we could not come into this agreement, that the way I, the way I look at transit-oriented development and the TPC is that we're allowing this denser housing, but the idea that you're going to be close to the transit corridor plan, you're going to be close to trans, public transit, and you're not going to have a car. So if that's true, then you're not going to need to have an additional space to park the car, because it's at the lower end of the ratio, right? So if that's true, then it would seem to protect the current inventory of the parking on the street, that you would not allow the tenants that are going to take the train to bring these additional cars and park it in the neighborhood. So I guess my question to staff would be, is that something that, in the development agreement, that the city can request and eventually agree to with the developer to not allow the tenants in this development to park on an area where it's permitted parking?
City manager. Jevon Grogan, city manager. In theory, what you're asking for, which is essentially, would be recorded as a condition of approval, something to the effect that future residents of the property could not participate in a future residential parking program, and I think your intent would be to apply it both to whether the building is a rental building or if it's eventually condoed. Without doing a complete analysis of that, my gut response is that it's potentially doable. I think we're here tonight with that idea coming up now, and this project has been a long time in the making. There were a number of different venues where staff sat down with the developer, when we talked about the setbacks, when we talked about providing two additional affordable housing units. I believe this project also had a subcommittee of council in its initial phase that met with the developer, and so that idea is just coming very late in the cycle. And as was said before, this is really a catalyst project for not only San Mateo Ave, but also improving the walk from the Caltrain station to our, to the Bay Hill Office Park. And so I'm not sure if the developer would be amenable to that, but it would be my recommendation that if the rest of council is interested in that, we do not negotiate from the floor, because that could have significant impacts to various things, but we go back and see if that's possible, but I would really want to hear an interest from the council before staff went through that endeavor. And, you know, and maybe the developer would like to say something as well.
Well, we did discuss this. It's a latecomer. My client is supportive of the idea. We discussed it at length, actually, before everybody came in, and if the city feels it's important, we would like to do what the city wants us to do. However, there are, there's something that I need to know, as an architect, who's been doing this for 45 years. Is it legal to allow other people in other buildings to use the parking permit program and not allow people in new buildings to use the permit parking program? Can I have, is there an answer to that?
So, we'll let our lawyer respond, but I do think that, and I think that's a very gracious offer on your behalf, but my experience is, when you truly negotiate from the floor is when you oftentimes get into trouble, and I think you're bringing up a legal issue, which is, would it be discrimination if prohibitions were applied to new buildings and not existing buildings? And that's a legal question that we can ask our city attorney for an opinion on, but again, I caution, legal advice from the floor as well.
As I said, we are inherently saying that we will support the city on whatever the city wants to do, but I agree, maybe we don't make this decision tonight. We work on it a little bit.
City attorney have anything to offer, or city attorney gonna be?
I would agree with the city manager. I think certainly the developers can ask their legal team for legal advice that they might wish to follow. We'll look at it internally, and if there's a discussion that needs to occur, we can certainly do that, and it sounds like the developer is amenable to a condition of approval as proposed by staff, and if that's the case, then really the legal issue goes away. With respect to the question about a development agreement, the development agreement has a number of other implications, which may be more easily dealt with by a condition of approval, and not a development agreement, since there's already a vesting tentative map.
That definitely would be gracious, and I think more welcome to your neighbors.
No negotiating.
No, I'm just making a comment.
Next question.
Next question.
Please.
Being that this would be rezoned?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I apologize. I just wanted to make it clear that if the council does wish to approve the project tonight, and if the developer is in agreement, that that can be a condition of approval, the council can add that as a condition of approval in tonight's motion, and we can, we can craft the language of that as we're discussing it.
With the understanding of, as I said, discussing this further, looking at implications and the legal ramifications. Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem, I'm sorry. Cell, a cell tower, cell antenna could be put on these buildings without any problem, being that it's being rezoned, and it was a commercial originally? Just curious if that's allowed here?
Michael Smith, planning department staff. The underlying zoning is commercial, it would become PD. There is nothing to prevent them from putting cell antennas on this building, though generally, a cell provider would need to negotiate that with the building's owners, and I'm not quite certain if those owners are amenable to something like this.
No problem, I'm just curious, because we've been dealing with cell antennas and the question I have about sidewalk dining, dining on the sidewalk, so the sidewalk is a public right-of-way, and if the building's built all the way out to zero lot line, to the lot line, then the dining would be on the sidewalk, and we would have to change our ordinance to allow that?
So the building will not, at least on Huntington Avenue, it will not be built out to the lot line?
Okay.
It'll actually be setback five feet?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so it's adding that, and then on the flip side, it's going out and creating the bulb out of eight feet, a little over eight feet and some change. So that, along with the existing sidewalk width, gives you your overall plaza as we're creating there, kind of.
Do we have any mind of what the parking for the eight places? I understand two of them are going to be loading on certain hours, but will it be two-hour parking otherwise, or is there any calling for maybe like something short-term so that somebody could run in, go get their coffee, and come back, so you get a more of a turnover there? Is there a time that we've identified for those spaces?
For, so of the eight, two will be loading zones. Nothing, no time limit was specified for the other ones, so they would be subject to normal city ordinance as far as time limits.
Since our downtown is at two hours, it seemed like making those at two hours would be probably appropriate.
That would be more than likely the scenario, but the traffic engineer will take a look at it and make a recommendation.
So that finishes my questions. I know, I'm sorry, but, you know, it's a really a big, big, big project, and it's very exciting, and it's my understanding that this, this building will have San Bruno Cable as its designated provider? Is that correct?
I do not know of that. Certainly with all new projects, we run a cable enterprise and we do outreach, but that is strictly disconnected from the approval that's before you, and so council is not allowed to consider whether that will or will be the case in your decision tonight.
Okay, because I saw that, how San Bruno Cable had their lists of, I guess, there's a whole couple paragraphs of what they were asking for them, asking for what things to be in be installed. I made that hopeful jump that that was just going to happen. So, okay. That's it?
Michael?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just because Marty brought this up last in terms of San Bruno Cable, I think I've seen in a lot of our approvals that we do run San Bruno Cable fiber usually to the larger facilities, at least to the Empo. No guarantee that there will be service, but we're at least making our service available first. I think I've seen that in a few of these, so, and I think I saw that in this as well. And so, but I did want to ask a little bit more about, you know, the TDM plan. And that's really where my concerns are in terms of, you know, what's being done to mitigate some of the concerns around the impact to the area. So in terms of what's being done with the high bandwidth internet, is the intent there that that access would be provided as either part of the rent or free to the residents in the building?
I don't think it was thought through to that level. Right now, the building would just simply be equipped with it. Whether residents would have to pay extra for that service, that would be my guess. I don't think the building owner would want to pay for that.
Typically with these buildings, it's just a requirement that high-speed internet be brought into the building. Oftentimes, when you're living in a multifamily dwelling, you can only subscribe to the services that are prescribed by the building or hardwired in. And so all new buildings typically require this type of high-speed internet connection.
And I think all of the points that are made here on this, I'm looking at the one slide for the TDM plan. I think all of the things that are being proposed here are good. They're a good, a good start. But, I mean, so, you know, providing a $50 Clipper card at the beginning, you know, one-time Clipper card to get people familiar with the service is a good thing. But I think in the long term, in the bigger picture, we do need to look at broader, more sustainable, more ongoing programs that are really going to encourage the type of behavior that's encouraged here initially, but we want to make sure that that's, that's going to carry on. And, you know, I don't get, you know, while I feel that these are good ideas, I don't think that this is really enough. And this is more a criticism on our programs, not on this development. So it just happens to be in front of us, so I wanted to point that out. We definitely need to, I think, dig a little deeper when we start planning these things out. And I know it's too late for this, for this program, but I do think we need to go a little deeper. And I don't think that each applicant should be wholly responsible for these things, but we do need to look at global solutions and then figure out how each of the new developments as they come online will participate in that. And I think that's really going to be the key to that sustainable success. You know, the parking is a concern. I was looking back on one of the slides here where it talks about this being a, what was that term that he used, Michael? About the location, it was a catalytic, yes, catalytic site. And it meant, one of the items that was pointed out there is that it would be, back in the TCP, it said it would be a 40-unit development, and now we're at 62 units. So I was wondering if you could kind of walk me through how we ended up, you know, initially saying this is a good spot for 40, and now we're saying, well, okay, maybe it's a better spot for 60. So that's a 50% jump in density.
Okay. So the TCP project that was anticipated for the site assumed that the site was 20,000 square feet. And at 20,000 square feet, you have unlimited FAR. This project that's before you tonight actually includes another site that was never envisioned in the TCP, and that is the commercial shopping center at 761 to 767 Huntington Avenue. And the reason being is because the actual site is less than 20,000 square feet. So for the actual bank building, 111, and that would have limited them to a 2.0 FAR. And so they were able to go into a joint venture with the property owners next door, and that got them above the 20,000 square foot threshold, but it also created more opportunities. So the site is, it's got to be about a third bigger for the number of units we're getting more.
Okay. Yeah, well, and then in that same slide, it talks about 9,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space and only 7,700 are proposed. So in that case, even though it's two lots now, the commercial space is a lot smaller than what we envisioned. So how did we get there?
So a key element of that is that the, what was envisioned in the TCP didn't actually have any commercial parking. That takes, that takes up quite a bit of room. So that's where part of that came from. And then you have to remember that they're doing an overall plan for the area. They weren't looking at a specific site development. So it's more than back of the envelope, but, but, you know, it's not a fully developed plan for the site. So what you have today is a more fully developed plan for the site. And so a lot of those things, you know, because you don't account for everything when you're just throwing up what could be done on the site. And so this is more like reality, basically.
Okay. Okay. And, you know, the only other concern I really have is, you know, how we handle the concession. So I know that the setbacks were, it was a big selling point in doing taller buildings. And, you know, we kind of promised the residents that there would be setbacks and that would help alleviate some of the impact of the taller buildings. And that, you know, ends up being one of the first things that we, that we back off on. And, you know, so I want, I want us to have a better idea of the cost benefit of each one of these things so that we can have a better, so two, you know, two lower costs or two below market rate units is really worth how much? And, you know, compared to what is a setback worth? So, I mean, we can't really put a dollar figure on those things. I understand that it's difficult, but, I mean, how do we, how do we determine if that's a good trade-off? Which one is more beneficial? And I can see where that might even change depending on, you know, the makeup of the council and what priorities are for the city. So, you know, it's a tough choice, but I still feel like in a way, we're giving away too much because that was such a big selling point of the height limits. And I don't know, I don't know how much value we put on the, on the lower-cost units. I know we need them. I know we haven't built a lot of them, but, I mean, how was, how was that negotiated? How was that decided? I know that the language that we're, what we're changing in the code actually still leaves it very vague and it just throws out a number of things that we can negotiate, but really no one-to-one trade-off on any of that.
Yes. The applicant is requesting to respond to your question, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Instead of 10 feet, we're doing five feet. But we also are spending a fortune widening the sidewalk and creating additional spaces and creating a public space. So in a sense, the effect would be as if you had a 10-foot setback. If you had a 10-foot setback there and you had to provide the number of parking spaces that we are providing, given the narrow dimension of the site, you would have commercial that's only 15 foot deep. As it is, we promised the Welch family to give him 20 feet deep. That's not very deep for commercial. Most commercial, they want to be 60, 70, 80 feet deep. It's not possible on this site. So when Michael was saying this is reality as opposed to the original sketch that was done for the previous developer, and I know that developer, and I saw the sketch, and I don't think he was going to do the 10-foot setback either. It's a narrow site. It's not because he is, you know, money hungry or anything like that. It simply is a terribly narrow site and is very difficult to accommodate parking, circulation, the sidewalk, and viable commercial space in that dimension. So if the lot was 20 feet wider, 30 feet wider, we could have easily done 10 feet, no problem. So I just wanted to let you know that it was not an unconscious, conscious desire to go against the setbacks, but rather a necessity. Thank you.
Okay. You know, so a few years ago, I want to say maybe it was what, four or five years ago that we approved the other end of the street? Yeah, it was quite some time ago and the project still hasn't come online. But I remember when we had the discussion around that and we talked about, you know, the lower parking requirements and actually Russ, I think you were at that meeting and you spoke about the concerns around parking at that time. And I also expressed concerns about, you know, doing that. And I said, well, let's give it a try. You know, we have some projections on, you know, you know, patterns of, you know, transit-oriented developments. And we can give it a try and then figure out if it's actually going to work before we approve any more projects. And I had really hoped that that, that we would have some actual data from that project before we had to make another decision. So here we are, and I know this development took a while to get through the process as well. So it's really unfortunate. I feel at a disadvantage that we don't have some real data that I, that it would make me feel a lot better about approving this. But it is a needed project. That corner had been blighted for years and just, you know, seeing the old bank building go away was, was a huge milestone. I can tell that there's been a lot of thought put into this and I understand that it's not an optimal lot for what we're doing with it, but the potential benefit is great. And so, again, I'm going to have to take it on faith that we're doing the right things to minimize the impact, that we're going to be ready to react should there be negative impacts either to the traffic or the parking or both. And that's, that's basically all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you have a follow-up?
Just a question. The commercial spot, the liquor store and there's something else in there, how many, what's the square footage of that commercial space? Is that less or more?
You're referring to the existing building at 761, 767?
Yes.
I might need to refer to the applicant for that one.
Shannon Welch, it's 5,500 square feet.
Okay, so more than 1,000. And then they currently have, what, at least five, six spaces, six or eight spaces in there currently?
I mean, I'm not, don't quote me, but I think there's 12.
Okay.
There'll be like 10, 10 to, eight to 10, I want to say.
I think some of the comments that were made earlier, you know, we can't get to this point in a project and start coming up with new ideas or new recommendations. So I think we have some work on the front end so that when a developer comes to us with a project, that we're not reinventing and recreating and reinventing and going back. And I think there's been a lot of good suggestions that were commented here tonight. I think the unbundled parking is kind of a concern for me, so I'd like to look at that going forward with future projects. I like the comments that were made by Councilmember Medina, but again, for future projects. So I think at some point, I'm just going to suggest that we look at the TCP and look at making some additional changes. I agree also with Councilmember Salazar regarding the TDM. And there's some great benefits there with, you know, bicycles and different things, but how do we sustain that? How do we really, how do we really change the way we live and work today with vehicles? How do we change? And I know that's happening with the younger generation. I mean, Ubers and Lifts are becoming a commonality with the younger generation unlike other adults. So I think that that's a win-win for them. I think the right tenant, this is a perfect place for the right tenant who's going to commute to the city, you're in walking distance to Caltrans as well as BART. So I think this project makes sense. Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Through the chair?
Irene.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Again, I appreciate all the work you guys did. I know it's been a long time and I know you listen to the neighborhoods and you made a good faith effort to do what they needed to do. Just to comment on the Transit Development Management, Commute.org through CCG are doing quite a bit of what you're talking about. They're working on programs to sustain the things that you're, the Clipper and the different, the bicycle programs and all of those things. So they're also working on the management of how do you sustain this and how do you keep people accountable for doing these kinds of things? So they're a great resource and I'm sure that we and staff probably knows about them and will keep up with them. So with that.
Michael's.
Sorry.
One question. So there's a number of different actions on this item. And what I wanted to confirm was that all of the, all of the proposed changes that we're talking about tonight only address this, or these two parcels, only this project and nothing greater than that. So I just wanted to confirm that. There was a lot of documentation. Try to get through all of the 300 pages was a lot of reading.
Yes, that is correct. The only thing being is that the Transit Court Order Plan would be amended and that would allow for deviations from certain development standards in exchange for community benefits. They're unspecified, but the deviations would not include parking or height.
Okay.
And then.
And that was the attachment A, where the changes were proposed in red?
Yes.
That was the only change?
Exactly. And then if I could, I'd like to address a few things. So I heard a mention of the unbundled parking, and that was in the TDM plan. That's the Transportation Demand Management Plan for the project. The unbundled parking, which is basically you sell a unit and you buy the parking for that unit separately, we actually didn't include that provision. So if you look at the condition of approval, it basically says that to execute the TDM plan with the exception of the unbundled parking. The TDM plan itself was prepared by an outside consultant, so it was hard to get them to kind of come back and take that language out. So we just simply addressed it to the condition of approval that that would not be included as part of it. So that's one thing. And then generally speaking, with the TDM plans, they're required by cities when there's an impact. There wasn't an impact related to this project. It is just something we asked them to do extra on top of this. So they're, they're not having to, so what you'll see on Commute.org is there's some sort of impact related to the number of trips generated by a project and this is, this would not meet that threshold. So this is just simply added, added on and there's no environmental reason why they had to specifically provide a TDM plan.
And then for myself, I think I concur with a lot of what my colleagues had said. But I think the biggest thing is, is about having a plan and a system in place that everybody knows what's going on. A, I want to compliment that they had community outreach, that sometimes we've had projects that is thought that there's not a collaboration, it's just we're going to do it this way. So I appreciate that very much. I do think, though, it has been a long process. It started in 215 and really started to get going in 216. And it seems that on the process element of it, I think that we're going to have a, you know, somebody else coming in into the department and really needs to analyze what those developers and those folks that come in to our community and want to just say, tell me what you need done, tell me how you need it done, and then let's get it done together and let's do it timely. And I think in this case, it seemed to have been that something else was placed and something else was placed. And so now we're ending 2018, going into 2019, and we still have it. I can remember that bank building and the last time my memory says was when Tom Lantos was in Congress and somebody was a Democratic challenger and they rented the bank building. Prior to that, that thing has sat there. And it was unfortunate that it's taken so long for somebody to sell it and that tried to do the right thing rather than just leave it. So I would like to see us going forward too for other developments. And I know the one you were talking about, the old theater, and it got delayed because of the water. So we couldn't get that, that data. But I think going forward, it would be good for the city, good for the council, that we all have a process and a procedure and that everybody from the community knows it to the developers and those that want to see the city flourish and move forward. So I would ask that staff collaborate and work. So I would ask that staff collaborate and work on that and some of the other items that were brought forward tonight that you'll deal with offline. Is there, so we have a variety of actions before us and what we're going to need to do is take each one of them separately. So on the first item, if council chooses to adopt a SEQA, and that would need a motion, a second, and then a vote.
Move that we approve the SEQA conformity determination?
Hold on, let me make sure, City Attorney, am I okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. It got me nervous. Okay, there's been a motion made by Councilmember Salazar, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and second it?
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next item is adoptive resolution amending the Transit Corridor Plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Second.
There's been a motion made and second it on the adoption of the resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next, we have the waive the first reading, I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And now I'll need somebody to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next item is adopt the resolution approving the planned development permit.
So Mr. Mayor, on this one, if the city council is inclined, you could direct staff to work with the developer to discuss adding a condition of approval that they would be, that the development would not participate in any future residential permit parking plan established by the city.
And with that, do we have consensus on the council for that?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Let's, yeah, is that all right?
We need agreement on the modification.
Okay.
Yes. All right. No worries, just want to make sure we're all on board. Okay, hold on.
Wait, wait, before we agree, could you, I hesitate to agree without some kind of thoughtful discussion about it, that future people are going to be precluded from having parking permits. If they pay for it, or if, you know, I don't know, I just, I'm hesitating.
Fair. And so the language that Mark read, it's really direct and staff to work with the developer to see if it's possible. If for some reason it's not possible, the city would not execute it.
Okay, that I can live with.
I would also just add one more thing, is that the general thought is that if the city decides to institute a residential parking program, it really would not be for properties that are fronting San Mateo Avenue. It would be for the neighbor, the neighboring properties that's surrounded in the neighborhoods. It is, I would say, extremely likely that if we develop that residential parking program, the boundary of that parking program would not include parcels facing San Mateo Avenue and would not include this parcel. And so...
Fair.
I think whether we take this action or not, when we think about the purpose of a residential parking program, we would draw the boundary such where it would not include this parcel. So that, I don't know if we could actually do it because, again, we're negotiating from the floor, but if we can come to agreement, I just don't see it being that impactful.
Okay, I can live with that.
Okay, everybody okay? All right, who wants to take action?
I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Second. Motion.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next is adopt a resolution approving a vesting tentative map.
Make a motion to approve it? Second?
Second.
Motion made, second, listen.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Final one is adopt a resolution authorizing installation of the loading zone on Huntington Avenue.
Now make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. That concludes the public hearing. Thank you for your patience. Thank you. Thank you for being here.